I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for February 7th, 2023. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Belka?
Here.
Leyland?
Here. Would everyone please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you now please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. There's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak during public comments for something that is not on today's agenda? Please give your name and address.
My name is James B. Robison. My address is 1555 Newell Street in Waterloo, Iowa. The reason why I'm here is to ask the board to have another agency looking to my allegations of being defrauded out of my vehicles, and I filed a complaint with the Sheriff's Department. And they're outright refusing to look at the thing and look at all the evidence. As a matter of fact, I have a letter that I received from, this would have been Deputy Rollins, and I've come here before, and you know, and you'd say, well, why don't you speak with Tony? And Tony had said, well, I'll speak to you. Well, since that time, Tony has refused to meet with me. And as a matter of fact, I just called a couple of, a couple days ago, and his secretary told me that Tony has instructed her to tell me that he is not going to meet with me. Now, this is a situation where they're outright refusing to look at all the evidence. Just recently, you've seen a situation where Deputy Neff, I have it on my laptop, I downloaded it, it was, you know, it appeared in the newspaper. There was a situation where an individual alleged that something wasn't going right, and he went out and spoke with everyone. In my situation, and this involves a lot of others, too, I have video footage right here on my laptop, right here. You can see at least three police officers, you can see various different city employees, plus neighbors. Plus, there's a video footage that, you know, just basically tells the truth, no matter what me or anybody else says, in terms of what happened that day. So, basically, I know the Supreme Court has ruled that an officer of the law does not have a duty to protect you. But, at the same time, they, I do have a right to equal protection. And this is what I'm here about. They need to look at this, you know, that's, when you have all this evidence, and you purposefully only speak to one person, that's a form of obstruction of justice, and it's dereliction of duty. Now, in terms of believing me and whether or not I'm telling the truth, we can go back to the investigation into Blackhawk County Jail. I was one of the complainants then. Deputy Neff, as a matter of fact, was directly involved in that. Nobody believed us, no matter how many complaints we filed. County Attorney, State Attorney, it went all the way up to the U.S. Department of Justice. Everybody beforehand said our complaints were without merit. There was no truth to it. The U.S. Department of Justice felt otherwise. They came out and investigated the jail. When the jail still didn't fall into compliance, they came out and had to monitor the jail for two years. One of the deputies in question went on, right after they left, and choked two more girls, which the county and the taxpayers had to pay for. At the time, the sheriff said, and Deputy Neff was employed then, Short Tony Thompson, he was employed then, they said, well, because of his involvement, what he had done, that would limit his opportunities for advancement. Well, when he retired-
Mr. Robison, I'm gonna have to stop you with the three minutes. You're over the three-minute limit.
Look, just to make a point-
Yes.
Fast forward. I'm the one who blew the whistle when Denise Hill was murdered. And nobody in law enforcement, nobody in the City Council, not the Chief of Police, not the Sheriff's Department, all the way up to the FBI, nobody called to Washington and told how they violated the law in allowing and being a participant in that-
Okay. I'm still gonna have to stop you today. I was gonna say, because you hit that timeline, but I was gonna say, when we last spoke, I think you and I talked once, too, and you were going to speak to our county attorney.
And that's who I went down and I spoke with them.
Okay.
At every point, everybody's telling me, look, they have to get a complaint from the Sheriff's Department first. Now, like I said, the evidence speaks for itself.
So what would you like us to do today?
Asking out, asking directly to the county attorney's office, because according to, according to, you know, your bylaws, you know, you would, if a situation like this is brought to you, you would direct this to another department, or possibly bring in another outside law enforcement agency to look at it fairly.
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll take that under consideration. I think there's, like I say, some of us have met with you, others maybe need-
So, like I said, what I'll do, I'll send all of you video footage of it all, yourself and the documentation, and then I'll let you speak to some of the other 45 to 50 people that this has occurred to as well.
Thank, yes, thank you very much.
Right.
Is there anyone in the, in the room that has public comments they'd like to comment on today? Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, hearing nothing further, we'll move on to claims and payments. Resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Whedon?
Good morning, Board. Just a couple of payments I'd point out today. We are making our second half payment to Blackhawk County SEGA's Criminal Justice Information System. That amount is $79,149.51. And we are also paying our allocations to, second half allocations to the libraries, and that totals $85,000. Our total bill payment today is $407,696. And of that, we are paying $1,600, yeah, $1,656 from the Sheriff's 6040 Fund. Everything appears to be in order.
Thank you. There are no further questions? Any questions for Michelle? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Belka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Our paved road system is in good shape. Again, the gravel road system, the heavily traveled gravel roads have many potholes in them right now, and just due to the warm, the warm temperatures, those roads are thawing, and a lot of potholes are developing. And right now, we are struggling to, to get rock on them. So please bear with us. I also wanted to mention that last fall, you signed a resolution to, I give your support for a Safe Streets for All Federal Grant application, that what we did hear from the Iowa DOT about 10 days ago, that the Iowa County Engineers Association, that 97 counties who grouped together, we did receive that $2 million grant. The grant is to update our local road safety plans. That should be an ongoing thing for the next few months, several months. We cannot apply for future Safe Streets for All grants until that local road safety plan is updated. So we will, we are working with a consultant, all of us, all the counties in Iowa are working with a consultant. We will get that done here probably by summer, and I'll keep you updated. And then, by next fall, we should be able to start applying for more of these federal grants in that category. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent.
Good morning.
Morning.
I had been asked to give a update in regards to a property in Washburn, 6848 East Washburn Road. That might be familiar to most of you. There is a few different issues with this property. One was a, brought to your attention, I think, with the berm, which is being addressed, or, but specifically to, to the question on whether or not this property is operating a commercial trucking business. Just wanted to relay some feedback from our code enforcement officer on that. She had visited the property, I believe it was back in January, mid-January, January 18th. She had spoke with, with the property owner. She reviewed the property. In her opinion, at that time, she did not see any evidence of there being a commercial trucking business being operated out of this property. She did note that there were two dump trucks located on the property. She also noted that there was a barn that had fell over. The property owner had pushed this barn away from the property line, and has been, weather permitting, trying to get that debris out of there. So again, she indicated there was two dump trucks. She also indicated there was a camper or an RV parked there, along with three trailers. So again, in her opinion, and this was during the day, she did not, she did not feel that, she did not see any evidence that there was a commercial trucking business. Now, I know Eric and Seth are here today also. They may have more to add to this, but this was the response that we had received back from our code enforcement officer with regards to that topic specific.
Rory, I believe the neighbors indicated they had video showing the trucking going in and out on different times of the day, at night, early mornings, and so forth. You don't know if code enforcement checked with the neighbors?
I don't believe she had spoken with the neighbors, but I do believe that a few of the neighbors have made contact with the city of Waterloo, and I want to say that there had been mention of some, some evidence of that. So our enforcement officer specifically did not get into that at this time, but I can let Seth or Eric speak to that.
If you care to, sure. Mike might want to as well.
Eric Trader, City of Waterloo Planning and Zoning, and Blackhawk County Planning and Zoning. Yes, the neighbor has spoke with us several occasions. He has made indications of pictures. I'm not sure if he mentioned videos. He may have videos. He indicated a willingness to submit those, but we have not received those yet. So we have also spoke with the county attorney's office. So, you know, we were kind of looking for some input on next steps, because we also have concerns that there likely is a zoning violation occurring at the site. But to issue a citation, we would need evidence of such, and that's a little scarce right now. So we had conversations with the county attorney's office about some potential options moving forward to try and gather additional evidence, but I guess I would defer to the county attorney's office on that.
Yeah, and so I'll take team on this, I guess. Bottom line is, at this point, it appears the most prudent thing to do is to say to the neighbors who are doing the complaining, look, if you've got, if you've got evidence of this, please present it, and we expect that you'll be willing to testify under oath to this. Once we see that evidence, we can, we can go ahead and issue the citation for the violation. Right now, the evidence isn't, isn't significant. Now, I visited with, with Eric, Seth, and Rory yesterday separately, and what Rory indicated earlier is, is my understanding as to our code enforcement officer, she's just not seeing the actual violation. She sees some dump trucks out there. They're taking down a, actually, a barn fell over, and they're trying to clean up the mess. She went ahead and gave them until April 30th, because that deadline had already been given for reconstructing or moving back that berm that we talked about, I think, at a prior meeting. And so, really, what, what I understand to be the code violation is the, the operation of a trucking business. If you look at the, at the area of the property, it looks like an odd one for a trucking business, frankly. And so I, I think this evidence has to be presented to us. Now, the only other option that I discussed with, with Seth and Eric yesterday was, we could hire, you know, somebody to go do surveillance. Of course, maybe a middle-of-the-road one would be to see if, if we've got deputies down in the area, we could ask them to keep a, a special eye on this area. But it sounds like what neighbors are alleging is going on in off-hours or during the overnight, and that's not when our code enforcement officer is there. So, we, we need to, we need to get that evidence, and then at that point, I don't think there's any hesitation, is there, Eric, that we'd issue the citation at that point?
No.
Who would they be contacting the neighbors, I guess? Would that be us, Rory, or would that be code enforcement?
My understanding is it's usually code enforcement. I haven't had to deal with this before, so.
They've been communicating with Seth as well, so we can do an initial reach out.
Okay. That'd be great. Thanks very much.
Hey, Eric, I got one more question. Wasn't there a third issue with an apartment that was dealing with approval of their PMZ and also the border of adjustment of tearing down some apartment?
This is Schrader with staff. There, there was, the previous owner had converted some interior space into an apartment and built a lean-to onto the building. The requirement per the zoning and building was that the apartment cannot be used, it cannot be occupied. There wasn't any requirement for tear down of that. The lean-to is required to be torn down, and that is part of also what code enforcement is working with him on, and he has verbally indicated an agreement to do so.
Is the lean-to the one that they didn't build permit-wise or to code?
They, they, they did not have a permit to build it, and because the property is in a floodway, they cannot legally build any additional footprint buildings in the floodway, so they couldn't get a permit. So it has to be removed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning, Board. Amanda Fezremire, H.R. Director. So I have a couple of updates here. First, just want to give you an update on our process with the position description questionnaire for the classification and compensation study. So we're starting to see more questions about that, a couple going to the supervisory staff for review. We do have the virtual or recorded version available. We just got it yesterday from the consultants. It had, it's a pretty large file, so we're just kind of working out the kinks as to how we're going to distribute that to the departments for those that either need a refresher on the PDQ process, or those that were unable to attend the in-person orientation sessions. Another thing that we'll be rolling out, and I'm trying not to overload staff, but we have several things going on. The Cantola training will be distributed here. It's an online training for diversity, equity, and inclusion, harassment prevention, bullying and respect in the workplace, drug and alcohol use in the workplace. And then we've also added cybersecurity. Al had requested that we utilize Cantola platform for that as well for their mandatory training needs. So, that is at a slight additional cost, but we're looking to absorb that in our training budgets. And then lastly, we also communicated earlier, I believe last week, that we have our IFRS representative, Kevin Went, who is coming up March 8th and 9th. We haven't had an onsite visit with the IFRS rep since before the pandemic. He will be here on March 8th and March 9th. Staff that are looking to consider retiring in the next one to two years can set up a 30-minute session with Kevin. If you're looking to retire in the next three to five years, you can attend a presentation at the end of March 8th to just kind of learn about what to prepare for with retirement and what to expect. So that is all the updates I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Super.
So, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I'm Antonio Lando Lovelace, Director of Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. Just had a couple of slides I wanted to share, coming back to our, our monthly opportunity to kind of tell you what we're doing here in Blackhawk County as far as the Veterans Affairs Office goes, so I can get this up and running. Okay. All right. So, one of the big things that we've been doing with our commission, I hope I didn't do that. Got to remember, I'm a veteran of, no, I'm just playing. I turn when I hear noises. One of the good things that we're doing with our commission this year is, our commission is looking at, whether it was our mission statement, whether it was our, our office policies, and anything else as we get ready to go into this new year. And one of the biggest things that we did change was, we minimized and kind of shrink, shrinking our mission statement, and that's what it is right now. Our mission statement is assist veterans and their dependents in the needs that, which they are entitled to. Again, this is our commission. You guys are aware of them. I will tell you this. This is probably the best set of commissioners that we've had in my three and a half years, because they're totally involved, they're committed to what they're doing, and they do it without complaints in that standpoint. We're still also promoting awareness of the self-help number. Over the holidays, we had three veterans in the area of Blackhawk County that we are aware of that took their lives during the holidays. And so we are still out there promoting awareness for helping our veterans during those hard times. Pack the Dome, some of our veterans participated in that. This is a UNI group that we joined. But again, getting out there, doing things in a customer service environment, showing our face and promoting the office in the best way we can in that standpoint. And you guys have these slides. This is only a couple of slides that I really want to share with you. And one of them is the UAW, the local 838. They are also partnering with us to establish a raffle and a fundraiser to help with our picnic area. They took it upon themselves to do this. They just wanted our approval. They're gonna do this raffle here and fundraiser in April, and it's gonna help purchase more handicap tables for our lunch area, and a few other things that the UAW, the veterans area, really want to do for us. The other one that I really want to show you was our hidden heroes. We, here's where we recognize veterans who are doing great things within our community. And, you know, it's, it's always one of those where you have to look at what that veteran is doing in the community. Well, in this standpoint, I just have to recognize, and I apologize that I haven't recognized this fine gentleman in the three years that I've been here, but Mr. Little. The commitment that Mr. Little has shown throughout our community, whether it's working at John Deere's, whether it's an elected official, or serving our great nation, it is a prime example of what a veteran's expectation is when it comes out of the service. This is what sets the bar, and Mr. Little sets the bar. Unlike Dan Dan, sets the bar, being a police chief and doing the things that he does. I'm just so proud of, when I look back at who I work for, and the great things that each one of you guys are doing, in particular, Mr. Little in that standpoint, over 50 years as a UAW member. Again, and the unique thing is, he's worked with both my mom and my dad. And so I have a little partial to that in that standpoint. But again, another Marine who has served his country with honor, distinction, and a lot of commitment, and not just his service to our country, but to the committee, to the community itself. And I just had to leave that up there. I'm a grandparent, and, and he is a grandparent, and some of you guys are grandparents. And life changes when you become a grandfather. And so, Tom, I take my hat off to you in that standpoint, sir. Some of the great things that we've done in the month of January, I won't belabor this slide here. Here's our stoplight chart that we give our commission. We just had our commission meeting on Wednesday, previous Wednesday. We're pretty much green in everything but the Iowa Trust Fund, which was suspended by the governor due to lack of funding. And they have since just made sure that they had the fundings for the ones that were, the applications that were out in August that they didn't approve, so they funded that. But we're probably gonna end up waiting till fiscal year before the trust fund is actually funded again. Then lastly, how we're staying competitive with the other counties, the other Big Eight counties in that standpoint, and here is how our picture is true today. Still about 77. That's plus or minus. I participated in 36 funerals from January to December. I have already participated in six. So those numbers fluctuate in that, our veteran population in that standpoint. But we've got about 1,912 veterans receiving benefits at a point of 2.9 million monthly intake coming back into the county. And that's really what drives us, is how do we help the county in that standpoint? And then how do we stay competitive? And then our revenue that's coming in, our donations that we track, and, so Michelle won't beat us up on that, but we do have revenue coming in, and this is how we track it. And we are very appreciative to the county and the community who donates. Month-to-month donations, as you could see, from December to January, just real quick, the $500 from Trinity, a church that wanted to donate to veterans. Even my old alma mater, East High, gave us $300, and then a veteran family in memory of their passing veteran gave us $150. Here's what we do for the, out of the county funds, where we're at right now with our balances and percentages used, and lastly, our group. And just standing by to address any questions or concerns. Just wanted to be short and kind of give you guys a snapshot or a mural how we're doing month-to-month in the, in the Department of Veterans Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that you bring it to the board as well. Like I said, it's good information. I know the liaisons are always entitled to, but I think it's good for all of us. So thank you, all of you. Anyone else would like to? Anyone on Zoom? Any department heads or elected officials on Zoom that would like to update? Seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes being approved for January 31st and February 2nd, 2023.
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. There will be two hearings later today, scheduled for a bid opening of the pavement markings project and public comment for the sheriff's lobby remodel project. Item seven, consent agenda. The following items will be acted upon by a single resolution.
So moved.
Fomo.
If there's nothing anyone wishes to remove from the, from the list to be discussed, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Belka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Contracts and agreements. Resolution that the agreement received from Tallgrass Archaeological LLC, Iowa City, Iowa, for architectural, historical, intensive survey and evaluation on the Rice Road Bridge over the tributary to the Wapsa-Pinnican River in Blackhawk County with a bid of $3,547.46 be approved as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Kathy?
Yeah, as I told you in the email, this came about as a request by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer in order for us to get a permit from them to reconstruct, replace this bridge. We solicited several firms who do this type of consulting work. We received two bids back, and Tallgrass Archaeology is our low bid at $3,547. I would recommend that we be allowed to contract with them, so we can get this work underway, so we can replace the bridge this summer.
You mentioned Kathy about it. They requested this, or they were asking for this. Is this typical, that they would do that for the, or is this some, a different bridge?
Ryan Brennan, the Assistant County Engineer. Some projects, it is more typical than others. There are some projects that we do anticipate this on and try and plan ahead. With this project, it's just that the bridge is of a certain age, that they wanted the survey to be completed to see if it is eligible for the National Register. In the past, the county, or the state has done statewide studies of all the bridges in the state. They're actually in the process of redoing that currently, but that'll be several years till we have some of that information as well.
Approximately, how long does this take?
I think they should have it completed around end of April, I believe, is their schedule.
Okay. Thank you. Curious as to historical value of a bridge there. Any other questions for Kathy or Ryan? It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Belka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item B, resolution that the service agreement between Windstream and Blackhawk County for phone services at the courthouse, Pinecrest, and the jail, with a term of three years, January 31st, 2023 through January 31st, 2026, at a cost of $3,952.55 per month, be approved, and the chair sign the agreement as recommended by Rory Giving.
So moved. Second?
Can I make comment on this real quick?
Sure. Yes.
I'm remiss. I have not had an opportunity to take a look through this agreement. I'm not sure. I think I've been provided it, but I'm not positive. I can have that done probably by the end of today, so I'd like any approval to be subject to review.
We'll add that.
Yes.
Well, then, subject to your review. All right. Thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Belka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwart?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Other business. Resolution that the amendment to the minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting on November first, two thousand twenty-two reflect the bids were received by three-thirty, Monday, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, for construction project L eighteen-oh-two Rice Road be approved.
So moved? Second.
I believe this was just an incorrect date that was used, so that's just making that correction. If there's nothing further, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwart?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Item B, resolution to authorize the county auditor to destroy the following: payment invoices for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, with pay dates July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved? Second.
Been moved and seconded, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwart?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Hall? Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Item C, motion that the Iowa Individual Health Benefit Reinsurance Program, two thousand twenty-two Annual Reporting Form be approved, and the chair to sign for same as recommended by Tim Jameson, Systems Real Estate Tax Manager.
So moved?
Second.
And this is, I believe, just an annual action that we take, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D, discussion, possible board action to authorize prospective consulting partners to conduct a limited RFP for third-party medical plan administrator.
Okay, so I have our benefit consultant Stacy on the phone, you can see her there. I'm going to pass out this timeline that she provided, but we're here to discuss the possibility of going to an RFP for the third-party administrator regarding the group health coverage plan that we have for employees and their dependents. This came about from last week's discussion where Preferred One had been acquired by United Healthcare, and therefore that we are looking at having to transition to their third-party UMR or an alternative, as to discuss today, going to bid. So I'm going to pass this out now, and Stacy, if you'd go ahead and like to take over from here.
Thank you. Good morning, board members. Stacy Wanderscheid from Perspective Consulting Partners in Urbandale, Iowa. I believe what Amanda is sharing with everybody is the medical plan RFP timeline that I prepared based on this last meeting and the thought of going out to the market. So wanted to kind of lay this out so that you could see, we backed into when a decision should be made if this were to go to RFP. So if you look at the second line to the bottom, you know, we'd need to be able to notify any administrator that would win this bid by April twelfth. So that means that the county would have to approve it at a Board of Supervisors meeting isolated Tuesday, April eleventh. So from there, we're really backing into it. For a normal RFP process, we would want ninety days allowed for implementation, that's the optimal, though implementations can happen in, you know, as little as thirty days, though that is definitely not preferred. So we've shortened the timeframe just by a couple of weeks. Where we're really kind of crunching is on the timing before that, and so we're looking at, you know, really getting approval today if that's something that the board wants to do, is go to the market. And as, as we have discussed this over the past week, you know, UMR, the transition to UMR to happen automatically was always going to include a review of whether or not the provider network matched well with what is in place today with Preferred One. So we would be looking at, you know, who, which providers are the county members using today, and comparing that to who is in UMR's provider network, and identifying any gaps. So that is something that I had previously requested, and based on what we would find from that, we would have to, you know, determine whether or not that was concerning to a point that you'd want to go out to the market. So it wasn't necessarily a foregone conclusion, but that we would just transition over to UMR, but, you know, we were, you know, feeling a little bit up against the wall with that transition and implementation without going to the market. As we've thought through this over the past week and had some discussions, one of the things to consider is that if you were to just work on the implementation and move over to UMR for seven-one, it's not without work, and it's the same amount of work to move to UMR as it would be if we go to RFP and have to work on implementation. So same amount of work from the decision forward. Where we're kind of adding work is on the RFP itself. And most of that is, you know, borne by perspective, though there's some front-end information that the county has to help with, so that would be the team, Amanda's team primarily. I've, you know, the, the field of candidates that we would send it to, there's probably about six candidates that are out there. I'd ask that the county narrow to five, if possible, that they include Aetna or their third-party administrator, Meritane, Oxyent, a third-party administrator in Cedar Rapids, Health Partners, Cisco, UMR, and Wellmark. But this is something that we would discuss with the team to determine, you know, who to include, and whether or not to include UMR at all, given concerns raised at last week's meeting.
Hey Stacy, that team, I just wanted, that she's referencing, that is with Tim Jameson of the Auditor's Office, Michelle Weedner, our Finance Director, myself, and then the HR Specialist in the Benefits area. So we often work with Stacy very closely in the providers when it comes to annual meetings, when it comes to renewal, so that's the team that she's referring to there.
When she mentions, or Stacy maybe this directed to you, when you mention as far as you'd be providing or working on the RFP with the assistance of this team, our team, is that something that you're committing to as far as from your role in this?
Yes. You know, you know, per the agreement that we have with the county, you know, you know, at times when you want to go out to the market, you know, we, you know, can plan for that and so forth. I mean, it will work with our, work with our team in order to accommodate this timeline. I prepared this with, alongside of other people in our office that would be working on this project, so we can commit to, you know, to following this process.
Remind us again, if we didn't move forward today, when would this be up? When would this contract be up?
So that, the contract that it, it ends, Preferred One's agreement was set to end June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five, and that's normally when we would go out to the market for an RFP. You know, UMR was willing to, you know, honor the administrative fees that are already in place, so that wasn't up for change. So they were going to honor that through the end of Preferred One's agreement. Another thing to consider is that I, there was some talk last week that, you know, or maybe we go with UMR for a year and then go out to the market. You know, I think it's a heavier, it's a heavier burden for the county and the team that would be mostly interfacing with the administrator to do an implementation essentially this year to move to UMR, and then potentially again next year to move someplace else. I also have some concern that this is for the county, you know, for you all to consider and to, to weigh, is that, you know, based on comments at last week's meeting, I do have concerns that if something goes wrong, and anytime you make a transition, something's going to feel different. Maybe their provider isn't in the network and they were before, or maybe a claim gets processed a little bit differently, or it's subject to slightly different, you know, there's different discounts or administration or whatever. I have some concern that, based on comments at last week's meeting, that employees may feel like, oh, yeah, that's right, this is an inferior company that we went with. So I do have a little bit of concern from that standpoint, and I really want to position the county well for success and providing a benefit that, you know, employees know that, you know, you have confidence in.
Well, it is an inferior company. Just for the public's awareness, this was one of the original three companies that was brought in for the privatization of Medicaid, and their business model was to deny paying, paying claims as much as they could possibly get away with it, which caused all sorts of small providers in our state to have to close down from small communities to our community. And they tried to pull it over on Black Hawk County with reimbursements for Country View, and they couldn't get away with it because unlike all these small providers, we actually had, you know, really strong, really great legal resources, and were able to get over half a million dollars back from them. And so, I mean, if you're saying that we don't want to go, we have to make the transition this year and then have to make the transition next year, then it sounds like we do need to move forward with the RFP, even if it is a tight window.
Yeah, I guess I'm saying that it's for you all to determine and kind of weigh those, those factors of whether or not that's something you want to do. I just want to paint the picture of what that means.
What was the cost involved with this?
So the cost for Perspective is thirty thousand dollars for the RFP, and an additional cost is for Wakely Consulting Group to provide and perform the network discount analysis. So all of these vendors, so Wellmark, you know, Aetna, anybody who's participating in the process has to send their discount information to Wakely, and Wakely then bounces that against their database, which is very extensive, to determine, you know, what those discounts are exactly against Black Hawk County's claims. So they take your claims for a year, they bounce the discounts off of that based on what the administrator is saying, and then comparing that to what they're actually seeing in terms of discounts. And so it's a way to kind of assure and exact those discounts and what they would mean to the county, rather than kind of an advertised discount from, from an administrator.
So it's, it's actually thirty thousand to Perspective, and then an additional charges?
It's between, I have not received exact pricing. They said that it would be between seven and ten thousand dollars, and I've asked for them to get exact on that, and as of this morning, I hadn't received that yet.
So that would be similar to if we decided to go to RFP, if none of this ever had occurred, and we allowed this contract under Preferred One to expire as is, and it was time to bid, that would have been, you know, the anticipated cost, and would have been similar to what we did in two thousand and eighteen, when we did the RFP process there.
And it sounded like questioning to a little bit of us far as the gap or the services that to employees and being a concern of them, that we're making sure we have the same coverage or better coverage in this case. And who's doing that? Is that our role with our team and the prospective team together, making sure that that's done so we do assure people?
So that kind of, I would say, and Stacy, you can jump in, we do have this certification document that, that specifies, you know, exactly what we're looking for, and, and kind of our hard, or I guess, knows or what we're firm on. And so, for example, that is our pharmacy benefit manager is currently under Navitas, so they'd have to be willing to carve out their prescription management program and allow Navitas to have that partnership, as is done currently with Preferred One. So that's an example of where we have, we're trying to set the stage and the expectation with, working with Stacy to go to that, through that RFP process, so that we're not getting a lesser, you know, product. It may be more expensive, it's very possible, administrative fees with any of these potential vendors could be more than what we're paying with Preferred One. But again, that's just a different factor that we consider anytime you go to bid. I don't think that's very uncommon right now with what other departments are experiencing too. So several things that, but yeah, essentially that scope, what we're looking for, we're looking to retain, you know, the networks as best we can, and to come up with alternatives. It does allow us a lot of flexibility being self-insured, but there are some limitations. And just for an example, like Wellmark, if you go with Wellmark, they're pretty well-known as that you, they want you to use their reinsurance or stop-loss insurance. You don't get to go bid that out to other vendors, and that's something that we currently do. We don't always go with Preferred One.
Wellmark, I have done that before with them, just so we know. You can go with another one, you may not come out ahead, but...
You have, well, the way Stacy explained it, you have, you're responsible for processing those claims as a self-insure. Now, it may be different.
Let's talk about that offline. Yeah, unless their process has changed, that's, that's not exactly how it works for us.
Yeah, and I'm just, when I had reached out to other HR directors, that was a common thing that they had said that with Wellmark. It could be, but that's the kind of things that we're going to have to navigate, because this is kind of multi-layered. It's not, you know, there's a third-party administrator, there's the networks, there's the stop-loss, there's many things that we're going to have to, you know, go through, and Stacy and her team are going to have to work through in order to feel confident with what we're bringing to the board. And that minimizes the disruption for employees and still feels like we have a strong benefit program.
Does the expenditure come out of the insurance fund?
I would anticipate it would.
Yes, I think it would, yes. And it, and it can afford it, I will say that, too.
So do you need action from us today, or is this is just, there's going to be more information coming that you'd like to provide to us?
No, we actually do need an action today, if it is to move forward, so that we can start adhering to the timeline that Stacy's laid out. If the action is to move forward, or if the action is to not do the RFP, then that will start our other implementation phase, which we discussed last week, but we do need a decision, just because we're on a limited timeline.
I'll offer a motion to move forward with a limited RFP, RFP conducted by Perspective Consulting Partners.
I'll second.
I, I do have one thing, I want to make certain that we get into, into whatever you approve, if you, if you move to approve to an RFP, you know, it's also whether or not to include UMR as an option.
I would amend my motion to be that it not include UMR as one of the prospective potential options.
Sorry, what do we?
I'm sorry?
We've got a motion and an amendment.
Not, not the amendment. It sounds like you're not accepting the amendment, you would still like to include them, at least in the...
Yeah.
I would second the amendment.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Tralka?
No.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
No.
So, do we need another motion then to...
I'll make a motion for the original motion that included.
To include all, the UMR?
Yes.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you very much. So we'll let you know, but we're going to tentatively just put that on your calendars for Tuesday, April 11th, just that will be the time where, you know, we plan to have this go before to actually make the selection then and approve the administrator so that then we can begin the 90-day implementation, depending on what those come back as, so.
Okay.
Any question, anything else regarding this? Thank you, Stacy, we'll be in touch. And then lastly, just Michelle, Tim, and Jerry, we'll get together here soon, this week if we can have some time, just to kind of go over the next steps. Thank you all.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to hearings. The time is 9:51. Hearing and bid opening on the proposed fiscal year '23 pavement markings project. Is there a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication?
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Veder, are there any written comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, that's fine. Were they all online once? Or were there some written as well? I see, never mind. I see the bid deadline was 3:00 PM on Monday, February 6th, and I'm assuming all were at that deadline?
Yes.
And the engineer's estimate is $182,896.92.
Correct.
Thank you. We're going to do that one first.
Yeah, we'll just do this one. The first bid is submitted electronically by Foreigner Asphalt Sealers LLC. That bid is $199,761.20. The second bid is from Ioplane Signing. They have submitted the bid bond. Their bid is $228,362.40. The third bid comes from Vogal Traffic Services. They have submitted their bid bond. Their bid is $189,434.31. Okay, the fourth and last bid, Select Signing Incorporated. They have also submitted a bid bond, excuse me. Their bid is $225,786.08. Those are all the bids.
08.
Thank you. 08.
Motion that the board has supervised to review and place on file, the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Moved.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The time is 9:55, and this is a hearing for public comments on the proposed sheriff's lobby remodel project. Motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication.
Moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. Item two, motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved? Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Veder, are there any written comments?
No, ma'am.
Not sure who speaks to this on the oral. This is a rather unusual hearing. So, Mr. Tryna?
My understanding is that this is a, this is a hearing simply, and it actually shouldn't be that unusual, but it's a hearing to allow for comments on the proposed project prior to when bids are received. And the issue is, is there anybody here with any questions? I mean, we haven't received any written ones.
Anyone on Zoom or in the room that would like to speak to this? Doesn't look like it. Hearing, no oral or written comments received. Doesn't say anything about closing it, so I assume that's all we have to do, Mike.
Yep, it does have a motion to close, that's what...
After this?
Yep. Yep, that's right.
So is there a motion to close the hearing?
Yes.
Seconded.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, hearing is closed. Item 10, work session, discussion, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year '24 Black Hawk County budget.
Can we take five minutes?
You want five minutes, if you'd like, okay. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess.
It's easy for me to skip out on that one.
It's easy way?
Yeah.
And then as the weather gets nice, you're always doing stuff on Sundays, and whether it's working or you, yeah, it's just like, the crowds must change. Last one I went to, it was the theme. Didn't see it was changing much.
No.
I've been waiting for Dave. Can you see him from where you are? He was standing out there talking. No, he was outside there, the door, no?
Oh, Dan out there?
We're going to start without him.
Yeah.
Thanks. Call this meeting back to order, five minutes or whatever it was, Grant. Thanks. Discussion of the budget, how would we like to start?
I think that Karen with Elections is going to present her budget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Usually it's when the past, you've run through it and I just answered questions, or do you want me to just...
If you want me to do it, I think you can speak to it better than I can, but yeah, so we have, let's see, I tried to make this bigger and it didn't work, so let's try it again.
And I can do it too, Michelle.
Elections is pretty straightforward this year.
Yeah, we have, so every other year in the even fiscal years, we have our city school election and the primary election. And then in the odd fiscal years is when we have the generals. So while we have two elections this fiscal year, it tends to be a lesser budget just because general elections are so much more expensive when we have to hire all the additional staff. So for these two elections, our staff can handle the bulk, will probably only bring in one or two versus the 20 that we do in general elections. Just a couple of notes in this budget, you'll see that printing costs went up, they went up nine cents a ballot. So a ballot typically in the past would cost us about 25 cents, and now it's 34 cents. So that is the increase in the printing costs. Just a couple other highlights in here, the contracted office expense is with the addition. So we always have our iVoters, which is our voter registration database. We always have that maintenance fee every year, but we also now have Neapolitan, which is our elections website, and then Modus, which is how we train and manage all of our precinct workers. So those are the additional maintenance fees in there. The software, you'll see a $10,000 line item for software. That's because we are in need of updating our election wear software. We're still running off of Windows 7, so we really, I mean, the good news is it's not connected to the server or the internet, but we do need to upgrade that. So that $10,000 would be getting us up to Windows 10 for our election wear, which is where we program the election and the ballots. That also means we have to upgrade all of our voting machine equipment. So we have the DS200s and the express vote machines, which will have to be manually upgraded too. And that would also include the training on that, too. So $10,000 is not too bad for all of that. The only printing will go up a little bit more for the primary election because the Libertarian Party is now a recognized party, so that adds the third ballot style for that election. I think that was most of my highlights, unless you guys have any questions. There's a couple of things that went down. The contracted office expense went down for the line item for state elections. Again, that's just because we don't have to bring in as many workers. The minor equipment went down from last year. That's because right now we're in the process of rewriting our electronic poll book programs, so the bulk of that expense is coming this fiscal year where we won't have that for next year.
Can you just speak to why not go all the way to Windows 11 versus Windows 10?
You stole my line.
Sorry.
I'm going to use it because it's really good. On behalf of Spinal Tap, why not go to 11?
And that's something I can ask our vendors, so that's not something that we can do internally through IT. That is contracted through our vendor, which is ESNS, so I certainly can ask them just to take us right to Windows 11, that's not a problem, but we definitely need to get that baby upgraded. So I certainly will note that in follow-up.
You mentioned like the machine and vehicle, or I guess in leasing, that was up 150%. I know it's an insignificant amount, but I was going to say, are there some others like that, too, that we should be?
No, so that is, we rent rider trucks to deliver our voting machine equipment. Their costs went up a little bit, and again, it's just because we have more elections this time. So when it's only one election, I only need four days. Now I need eight days, just because it's two different elections.
Appreciate that.
Yep, so the cost is, it's just merely because I have two elections.
Anything shall you want to point out, or anything we should...
The only thing I would point out is you'll notice that the net cost for this year is a reduction because we're in an even year. We like years like that, but unfortunately, can't do that all the time.
No, general elections are, general elections, and I've talked about this last year during budget time, when the legislature keeps narrowing that window, I have to bring in more people. Unfortunately, I'm not going to work 24/7. But that's, even though we have two elections, that's why it can be a little bit less because we're able to mostly handle the volume with our current staff and not have to bring in all the extra.
And you can see in her staffing summary, her FTEs go down in this year, too, for the same reason.
Such a unique-looking staffing report.
Has unique hiring and staffing needs, so.
And it seemed like this time you had a lot of good assistants. I was going to say...
We had the best team last year than we've had since I've been here, so just hope that everybody comes back again next year. But yes, the staffing was wonderful.
And maybe you want to talk about the revenue piece, how that's impacted with the different types of elections?
Sure, so just to get you caught up to speed, if you didn't know, so some years we'll have revenue, some years we don't. Our revenue for our office is really minimal in that we really only generate revenue annually from people buying lists from our office. However, by law, city and school jurisdictions have to pay for their own elections, so because we have a city school election in this fiscal year, we'll get reimbursed for that cost. And that goes for special elections. You'll see that we don't normally budget for special elections because we never know when they're coming, but we typically will always get reimbursed for them because they tend to be city or school jurisdictions. We do, the county covers the cost for a primary and general election. So last fiscal year, you wouldn't have seen any revenue. This year you will because we will get reimbursed for the cost expended for the city and school elections in November. And then I do budget for December runoffs, just because we've had them every year since I've been here, so might as well just predict that. But outside of vacancies that come up, so for example, we have three jurisdictions having an election March 7th that I never budgeted for because I never know when those are coming. We usually get about a 60-day notice if we're lucky.
I think those are all the significant things in that budget, so any other questions for Karen?
No, doesn't look like it. Not at this time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And I have just the board particular office budget, not all the agency budgets today, but I thought we could probably get through this one.
Okay.
Yeah, got it up there now. And you'll see we have two columns for fiscal '24, one with our current staffing and one with a new position request that has been suggested by one of the supervisors. And also the same thing with expenses. We have some new initiatives being proposed that you'll see in the FY '24 requested column, mostly under professional services. And those are really the only changes to that budget. I think Supervisor Hall, if you want to talk about the things that you're proposing, that would be better than me trying to do it.
Sure, sure. Well, I'll start on the professional services side. Wanted to look at doing a, updating our, a full update of a strategic plan. Think it makes sense, think the time is right. We do have an existing strategic plan that was initially conducted, it sounds like 2008, and it was a 20-year plan. But as we all look back and think about our lives over the last 20 years, or three years, certainly it's changed a little bit, so I think it makes sense for us to update that strategic plan. Most, last time, I think we worked with UNI Institute for Decision Making to get that done, with some additional dollars dedicated to rebrand, updating logos and brand assets, working with Al, and there's a website redesign committee or subcommittee that I'm on. It's very apparent that our current logo doesn't lend itself to modern uses, and so there's some dollars there. This would likely just be first phase, making sure that all of the items, email signatures, website, social media, all reflect all the digital versions of the logo, and then we could, we could take up full implementation in the second phase with, you know, logos on vehicles and the like. And then last... on vehicles and the like. And then lastly, in the salaries line, there's, worked with Michelle and Amanda to come up with a position really focused around communicating with the public. This is a cross-vertical position that would work with multiple departments, primarily create content. And that would be content that would live primarily on our website and then be reused and repurposed on multiple social channels. That helps our SEO, our search engine optimization. And it would be the long-term strategic communications. So for instance, things like highlighting a longtime poll worker as we look to recruit the next generation of folks to come in and help operate these elections, or highlighting the need for our engineering department to be investing in this stretch of road, or why this is important to our, to our public. Of course, it would also assist with rebrand implementation if we were to go down this road. And really, just making sure that we're strategically communicating with the public. Our staff does an amazing job. We've got a number of Facebook pages from the county. They are, for the most part, immediate uses. So when there's, when there's a street closure, when there's, when there's an election going on, we see some traffic, but not as much of the long-term communications that helps really articulate why local government is important. And so, yeah, like I said, we've worked with, with Michelle, yeah, Michelle and Amanda on at least some initial drafts of job description, but have that here in the, in the budget.
Breakout costs for, like I said, those two items, maybe you're the best to answer that, as far as that was the total of $55,000 for the professional services. But I assume there's, some was the strategic planning, some was-
Yeah, I think-
The estimate that I put in was about $40,000 for the strategic planning and $15,000 for the digital rebrand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Those are one-time expenses.
Correct.
I think those are good investments to make. There had been, I mean, staff's been supportive of us doing a deep dive into a strategic plan as long as I've been here. We were starting to make some headway there early 2020, going that direction, and then the pandemic sidetracked, you know, all of that. And so I think now is, now is a good time to take that up. And the communications position, it's something I've, I've thought about over the years as well, and I've, I've mentioned in different kind of formats. I think about, I think about back, you know, when the pandemic started. And quite frankly, how, I'm trying to think of how to, how to say this, but our initial press releases going out were not of a professional level. It was even kind of embarrassing to see all the, all the mistakes, or, you know, wrong phone numbers and stuff. And it's because someone was doing it that wasn't a communication, who didn't have training or expertise in that. And so it's, we've got a story to tell in this, in this county, but we need help telling it. We've got a community to grow, and we do that by telling our story.
Yeah, I will add that, you know, the conversations that I've had with department heads and staff, it's all been very welcome, the idea of us doing, creating this position, right? Taking, recognizing that they've all got full plates. And some of the social media stuff, especially the long-term social media strategy, is the stuff that easily falls off that plate. And so, that doesn't mean there's not a need for it. It just means that, that their dedicated discipline is, is to their, sort of meat and potatoes of their job. And this, this is one of the things that unfortunately falls off. So to have a dedicated position really ensures that we've got continuity as we approach communications from a long-term strategy.
Strategic plan, I bet, I think, too, like you said, there've been several years, we've mentioned trying to do that. And then, like I say, pre-COVID, obviously, I think is where we left off with that. I guess, wanting to understand a little bit more what you want to accomplish with that strategic plan, because we know it was a little bit different, I think, or I thought the expectations for myself coming in and what we did with IDM was a little different than where we'd go. So I don't know if you're, have even given it thought yet to what you'd like to see or how that would be. I know we've talked about strategic planning, I think, from our reserves and some of the financial. That, I'm expecting, I guess, to work with Michelle and have us all involved in that type of strategic planning, to where we want to go in levels and that type of thing separate. So I'm thinking, you're thinking more of the departments and where our department's direction is and responsibility, and if we're in the overall, I don't know what you're thinking.
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we knew, I think we've even had staff try it at times, and that gets us to be a little too much for anybody to come up with that.
Yeah, we've had, you know, a lot of really great finance directors over my time here, and some of them have tried to take that on. That's, that's a lot to add to that, to their plate. And I don't want to do that to Michelle.
Or anybody else. What is that qualification in the job description? All other things as assigned?
Sometimes that gets to be bigger than ourselves, doesn't it?
I agree. Yeah, for sure. Communications, I don't know, I'm a little, a person, I guess, just because I don't understand exactly how that would work. But that doesn't mean I couldn't look into other counties doing similar. I know it's different. I know there are cities that have communications departments or staffing, and-
Yeah, there are certain, there are certainly some counties. I don't know, man, if you can speak to a few.
So the ones that, I would say it's kind of like the safety coordinator last year that I talked about. It's something that we're seeing public sector trend towards more. One of the best, one of, I would say, one of the model positions I've seen or setups is in Story County. They've got a, it's like community outreach and special projects manager, which is heavily involved in the communication piece and the social media piece and the overall promotion of the county services. One of the projects they did, they did a, for the HR department, was a kind of a, you know, come join our story tagline. And it highlighted various positions around the county. It was a really done, well-done video that really highlighted like why it's important that these jobs exist and to kind of increase that recruitment, you know, exposure, I guess. So just something that they can use. And again, not something that I'm very comfortable pursuing on my own. It's a, I think it's a great initiative. We've attempted it in little areas here and there, but I'm not an expert in social media. I'm not an expert in communication. And I think that's where the departments, other counties have also kind of recognized that need. And, you know, we do have a lot of employees around here that do this type of work in a very kind of specific area. So we currently have the Health Communications Strategist, for example. That position's been in place for two years now, and it's been really incredible to see that employee who came out of the union for this non-bargaining role really grow the promotion and awareness for the Health Department. She does presentations and promotes, and pushes out information. It's very clear, like, they're gaining a lot of exposure through having that dedicated role and one that allows more time and more kind of like collective effort in how we communicate things to the public. So I think that's been kind of an interesting opportunity to see at just one department level. And it could be kind of utilized well across all the county offices if we had a similar position, like a marketing coordinator.
So that was gonna be one of my questions. Then the marketing that individuals are doing, particularly that department, which is doing a very heavy press on that, does that position go away?
Sure. So we haven't even approached the Health Department at all about the possibility of anything like that being absorbed into this. One concern I had was that, what would it take away from the Health Department? And clearly, following the pandemic, they had a lot of needs, just as an outcome of that, and were really put on demand to be able to communicate things effectively, efficiently, and then along with their accreditation. So I wouldn't rule it out, but I would want the opportunity to really sit down with Caitlin and the employee in the team, that management team, and even the Board of Health to say, you know, because I would think they would have questions about what time would be taken away from them. That would have to be explored to all the other departments. Certainly, I mean, I would say at Story County, I think they've got two positions, and it's kind of set up as a manager and a support staff like that, so.
Well, I'm thinking, in particular, too, of the Conservation, who does an excellent job of marketing and newsletters, and whether it's electronically or whether the website and that information, too, plus the social media, and how does this work with that?
Sure.
Or not? Or is it just additional, and they continue doing what they're doing, and we-
So I kind of envision it, maybe, I don't know, a point, a point of contact to push material out or to create content. So I think Conservation is a great example of someone that has already taken that initiative. I think they work closely with those, but you're always, this person's going to have to collaborate very closely with the departments to understand their services, understand their audience, understand what kind of content they need, because it's going to vary from a wide range of, you know, what we offer. So I don't anticipate this person, you know, taking away anybody's ability to support Conservation, but more working more collaboratively and hopefully identifying newer things or taking advantage of better communication methods or, you know, social media platforms and kind of just expanding that then to other areas such as HR, law enforcement, you know. And again, that would also be kind of working closely with public health. But I'm guessing most of that's done with some of your unit managers or the office staff, I think, right now, that kind of manage that profile materials?
They do. It's just on a very limited basis. It's what they have time to do.
Right.
And we, we in Conservation, I'm sorry I'm not up there, but-
You'd like to come up here.
Sure.
Mike Hendrickson, Director of County Conservation. Just very quickly, a year ago or so, during one of our work sessions, we actually, staff put together a marketing program. And, and it was very well-written. It, it covered everything that we needed, and it took us in areas that we can't. We just simply don't have time. We don't have the staff to be able to get us into those areas or those niches of people that we aren't touching. So we had a wonderful plan, and it's still there, but we have no ability to implement it because staff doesn't have the extra time. So we're relegated to what I think is, is really pretty good, but it's about all we can do with our Facebook page and our, our website and all those kinds of things. But we could be so much better because we, we're hitting those niches that, excuse me, that do recreate and understand recreation. But there's lots of other things out there that would help expand Conservation and everything that we do. People that just wouldn't normally go to one of our, our websites or our Facebook page to see something. And so anyway, yeah, it would be, we, we see it as a huge advantage for us. And it would be in addition to what we do. I don't think we would stop doing what we're doing, so.
Thank you. Are we gonna get a list, Michelle? I know, well, we do have capital improvements, and that, that type of list will be coming, and we'll be reviewing that, I know. And the departments, some of them, their second round of budget again. The positions that we're looking at, the numbers-
Yep, we can do that.
Okay. I was gonna say, I know there's-
New addition, any additional things or, yeah. Yep, we can do that.
Additional bodies and that type of thing.
Right. Do you think this is one of those things that, you know, when we look at, you know, what are some of those other larger counties doing that, that really set them apart and, and, you know, quite frankly, set them up for success? We see that the most successful forms of economic development in the state are places where the county and the cities are working together on it. And I think that, yeah, I think this just, this would just show that Black Hawk County is, is one of the 21st century counties in, in the state. And that's, I want to be that.
Strategic plan is almost a no-brainer for me. And I'm intrigued by the marketing position. Ultimately, I want to see the bottom line on what we're looking at for a tax increase. And then we, and then I have to, in my mind, prioritize what I think is most important.
Yeah, I think we're all kind of waiting for that. That's coming.
We're very close to having that. So got a few outlying things to get, and, yeah, we'll have that very soon.
So what are your thoughts on, on, I guess, completion of budget sessions or where we go from here or that type of thing?
As I said, we have the board agencies and the board general supervision activity to go through yet. Those are all, almost all, contacts with external people and entities that we've had a little bit of a challenge figuring out this year. So those are left and to talk through the capital. And then, I think by next Tuesday, we'd probably be ready to set the data hearing on the maximum hearing levy. And then we can start summarizing, and you can start prioritizing what things you want to see. So, yeah, we're just about right there to start that process.
I will raise, I know we all had an email from Bar Prather about food bank funding. And, and I do think that it is, it would be the right thing to do to move that back to how it was treated. I guess before, there were solid waste borrowers, and there was a whole application process. And then we had a loose, not application process that we did for a couple of years here. Now we have an application again. But it, but it does seem like that that is something that there should just generally be a base level of funding included, as we do with energy assistance.
Do other counties do that? I was gonna say, that was years ago. It seemed like, it was like a long time ago before the solid waste was, had fees for that. I don't remember the timing of that, but I was gonna, wondered if that's what other-
Yeah, I'm not sure.
-counties do, or communities, too. But if anybody knows that, about checking further.
I don't know.
Because I don't really know, speaking to it, if it's on the positive side or not, or to do it with the way we have. But it does seem like it, like you said, feeding people. Seems like a pretty-
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty basic.
Yeah. Maybe we can talk to Colleen about that, too.
Yeah, and I responded back to her, and she would be interested in meeting, you know, maybe two supervisors and Colleen at the same time. So I'm happy to do that. But if any other, whichever email also wants to join me.
Yeah, we could just get more information on that, I'm sure. Because maybe this would be a year to start that, or at least add it for going forward.
Yeah.
Discussion.
All right. I will, I'll continue to discuss with Bar.
Okay. I'll reach out to her as well. But like I say, if it works for both of us or any of the others to do it, we can certainly do it, but individually if we have to.
So I think if that's everything for this section, Amanda has some things she wants to discuss with you.
How could I forget?
Okay. And I think you said I can just share my screen out? Is that right? Okay. So I'm gonna pass out, this is a table that we look at around this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I still don't get one.
Yeah, need an extra? Nope. Okay. So each year, I had sent this out yesterday afternoon, or early evening. So each year around the time that we'd start to discuss, you know, salaries specific to the non-bargaining department head, and then also you have the elected officials with the compensation board recommendation. This is a comparison that the Human Resources Office completes based on the existing fiscal year salary data for the department heads and elected officials. We are able to retrieve this information from ISAC. They have a salary survey where they track all of this information across all of the counties in Iowa. But this is just our opportunity to kind of get an idea of, you know, generally where we sit amongst department heads, which is, I think, for pretty important this year, considering we're doing the classification and compensation study. And as you can see there, an overall average, when you look at all of the department heads, we've run about 91% to the market average amongst these different, I would just say, competitors or similar counties. One thing that I did add this year, I added consolidated communications as a department head as well. Just more so noting that that's a discussion that we've been having with the EMA and the E911 discussions. However, just note that consolidated communications can be set up dramatically different from one county to the next. However, just note that consolidated communications can be set up dramatically different from one county to the next. So, the second table that you have, and we can kind of go through, I have a couple of points that I want to just talk about, ones that I previously addressed last fall when it comes to internal equity. But the second table that you have, one of the other things that ISAC also documents with wages is the years in office for each of these roles and I thought that was interesting as well. As we look across, you know, and that isn't necessarily a full experience. For example, you can see for our finance director having one year in office, obviously, you know, Michelle came with a significant amount of experience at that level, but it's really just kind of highlighting as there is turnover across these type of positions in different counties, where these ranges or where these salaries are starting to kind of occur at a person's point in their career. So, that is the kind of other aspect of this. And then the last table shows the elected officials. This will actually more come into play when you guys, or when the board determines to accept or modify the compensation board's recommendation. And just a reminder, they recommended 3% for the board of supervisors, 10% for the remaining elected officials. So, you can see, this is a, you know, 91% on average for the department heads. There are some that are closer to the market, some that most all, a majority of them fall in that 92, 93 range and then you have some that fall, you know, more than 10% below the market. I've talked about compensation philosophies in the past. This is going to be something that you all will be discussing with the consultants at the time that they complete their study and have a recommendation. There really are three philosophies when it comes to compensation, whether you're public sector, private sector. You can either lead the market, you can meet the market, or you can lag the market. Blackhawk County, generally, we've known that we lag the market. That's kind of been an area that we've chosen to stay in. I think over the last couple of years, it's for competitiveness-wise for recruitment and retention, it's been a difficult past couple of years. Last year, we lost about 70 employees and about seven or eight of those were retirements. So, others, majority of those people leaving in that year, left to go seek employment elsewhere. There are a number of reasons why people leave, but when we look at information and when we look at whether it's exit data or we look out into the market and we see what kind of jobs they're paying, wages are typically something that's noted repetitively. Flexible work is also noted. We know we're pretty limited with what we can offer for flexible work. Most of our jobs here cannot sit from home and do that and that's been a huge change in the workforce and a huge expectation in the workforce that public sector across all of the counties and cities, school districts struggle with. And then, of course, you have kind of that similar work-life balance which kind of feeds into flexibility as well. More often noted that employees say that we have strong benefits. We generally have pretty strong PTO vacation time and, but again, wages are often usually noted as something that's really positive here. So, just something to take into consideration as we move forward with, you know, our existing workforce and new workforce ahead and really kind of showing that these aren't just, you know, comparable counties, but they really are competitors as well. One thing that the consultants will be bringing in and one, it's in alignment with our compensation policy, is that they'll also be bringing in private sector data. They'll have certain cuts of that, especially for positions that are heavily done in various, you know, public sector and private sector. So, finance is a good example of that, IT is a good example of that. But it may not mean, we're probably not going to look for private sector law enforcement. It probably doesn't exist very much, so just some information on that. And then, so we can discuss this spreadsheet, I do have a couple of points or three positions that I want to talk with you all about a little bit more in-depth, but looking for just kind of more of an awareness for you all and more kind of looking ahead to when we have this compensation classification study done. I would anticipate 91% at the department head level is probably pretty accurate across most of our positions here. There may be some that are above market, some that are right in line with market, but I would say on average, they're going to probably dip below that 90 to 95%.
It concerns me, I guess, that the positions, I mean, that we lag, I know is kind of where we've been an acceptable place to be, but I said, when I look at department heads and I see that the plate, the positions we've, for retirements or whatever reasons, when we've had new people accept that position, we've obviously offered more salaries and because we needed to in the market. And what happens, I think, then is the people that stay with us and have shown years of tenure here with us and experience and they're the really lagging positions. So, I think, yeah, we need to do something about those in the immediate timeframe if we could and I don't know what that would mean to us. I would even like to propose that we look for, and this is not proposing for a vote, but just for thinking of this, doing something in this current year to get those where they are because those are positions that are critical to us as well and to be lagging to such a degree doesn't indicate, I guess, where we should have those.
Yeah, no, I would agree, like it's, it definitely bothers me when somebody has served the county well for decades usually and retires and we have to bring in somebody usually, you know, significantly more than they retired at and that never sits well.
Michelle, do you know the finance director in Woodbury County?
I should, but I think I may have spoken to him on the phone, is all.
Forty-six years.
Well, and I actually have 40 years of experience, as much as I hate to say it, so I understand that one.
And we've seen that over time, some of those.
I'm glad to see us get in the 90s, I was going to say that we're there, but I just thought, yeah, it was, too, it was great to see, but I just say, yeah, that kind of a, yeah, we need to make that correction.
I would anticipate Woodbury, when that person decides to retire, that they may have to look at that scale.
Yeah, for that amount of time, I was surprised at the reach.
You see Dubuque's right next to it with four years in office. Now, it's possible that person has 40 years of experience too, but...
Yeah, you can't really wait what they have with the organization as being any value of what their experience and which is, so.
I'd be more comfortable to see everything land within the 5% to 10% market at least.
Five to 10 of what they are current or five to...
Right, of market. See them landing within the 5% to 10%, if not, if not better, but.
And what we will, what we can do, because this is fiscal year '23, so, you know, you're always, it's kind of a moving target with compensation in the market, but, you know, for example, I'll just speak about mine. I'm in the beginning half of my scale, I only have two years in the position. I have almost eight years here with the county, but that seems more reasonable to be lagging to some degree. But I'm not as comfortable, like with someone like our maintenance superintendent, who's been here in the office or in that position for 14 years, had a lengthy career before that and is, you know, 85%, 86% to the market average. That's someone that should really be above market based on their experience. And that's one thing that I think, you know, we're going to, no matter what, we'll have to phase something in likely to make those kind of leaps and bounds and hopefully by the end of the study, those are the things that are highlighted, that we have a compensation system that really identifies those internal equity issues and moves people through a competitive market pay range and appropriately based on their years of experience and skills and things like that.
You've always been rather humble with your HR director experience, but I, so I thank you for that, but need to recognize too, the job that you have to do and the job you're doing is critical and important to all of us.
And I think some of that comes, you know, and I appreciate that comment. I think some of it's because I've had predecessors before me that haven't made what I make. And so I do, you know, that always weighs on people, right? I think it's really great that the board is supporting the classification and compensation study because I think it will provide us a better tool and for the board to really kind of determine, well, if we do want to lag, it's okay to lag, we just don't want to lag to the degree of beyond 10%. Because really, according to compensation professionals, when you're lagging beyond 10%, you're really misaligned to the market. And so I think that's kind of what we're seeing here at times, but thank you.
With those several positions, yes, thank you, food for thought.
And with that, you know, so because I'm in the earlier stages of my pay scale, I will receive the 3% merit. However, even last year, I was at 79%, before that, I was at 70-some percent. So, it's like, well, at some point, I hope to not always be at, you know, 80% of the market. It just, it's been a volatile time, you know, with a lot of turnover for a lot of our public sector peers as well as in private sector as well, to where, you know, we've had to kind of reassess things and we've had to do that with different positions, such as like the finance director and the IT director with those recent director recruitments, so.
Maybe the state average should change rather than for years of service at the county, but years of experience.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could capture that. That's one thing with this table, you don't necessarily...
Can't do it all.
Yeah, because it's hard to know, like, and again, Michelle's just a good example. It's not representative of her experience when it says one year with Blackhawk, so. And even someone like Mike Hendrickson, who came up through conservation, Mike's been here for a long time as well.
Thirty-one, yeah.
And, you know, pursued opportunities to grow as a leader in conservation and so.
Yes, in any of those positions, we'd have to pay more, obviously, to attract the talent we've got, so, yeah, thank you.
I would agree. So, that's just a kind of, again, no action today, but for your awareness, what I want to specifically talk about, and again, this is just some things that I've noticed, which one we've already discussed, maintenance for superintendent. So, this is a director-level position that is currently six pay grades below the HR director. Roy and I, right now, we both work to support the safety director. I think this position has evolved over time. If I were to go and post this position today at a range of $64,000 to $89,000, when it's 86% below market average, we wouldn't get the type of, you know, experience and skills that we would want to be responsible for the facilities management of Blackhawk County. So, a quick recommendation for that one, which I did bring this up last fall, I would like to see this position be equivalent at least to the HR director. I think our scopes are somewhat similar, just in different areas. But again, this person should be at least brought up to midpoint, if not, you know, further. So, that's just an example of kind of, I think, what some of you that have indicated some interest in this, how you can make some of those adjustments for next fiscal year. So, that's that one. And this, and I'm mostly coming from this as an internal equity argument as well as market. I don't have market data on all of them though. Second one that I've talked with, I've spoke with our auditor about is our payroll and accounting manager. This is the third supervisor-manager role in the auditor's office that covers a lot of ground, as you all know, working closely with Billy. And they are three pay grades below the systems real estate tax manager and two pay grades below the election manager. So, again, I'd like that one to be brought up, to be more equal to those two managers and then reflect that experience with that kind of midpoint level.
Can you provide us something with that, like hard copy?
Yep, I can definitely provide that to you.
Thank you.
And then the last one, just again, with payroll, the payroll specialist position. We have two payroll specialists in the auditor's office. They are currently six pay grades below like the HR specialist and they're really the lowest full-time, non-bargaining position on this scale. The commissary clerks are part-time and specific to that commissary fund. Payroll supports all of the departments in the various, you know, tasks of payroll, reconciling with the billing with regards to our insurance, whether it's life insurance, health insurance, and then timekeeping and applying the many different accruals that we have or the different unions and the different accrual plans. I have to ask Billy, but I think off the top of my head, we probably have close to 10 of those. And that's another one where, when I look at internal equity, this accounting specialist position supports the health department and I feel like, oh, well, that should still, that payroll specialist should be closer or above that or more in line with like an administrative aide too, which supports only one department. So, those are the kind of things I think you'll also hear from the consultants with the classification and compensation study. Those are the areas that I would say I've noted that kind of, that feel the warrant, more immediate action. And, but I certainly can kind of provide a business case or a justification in showing where they would go, so. We've been assuming 3% across the board for non-bargaining and elected officials right now with all the budget figures, so. And then we've also put in place for non-bargaining the existing merit program, whether you get an additional 3%, 2% or 1% depending on your, where you are at in the scales, so. But I do believe you guys have to take a formal vote at a meeting to approve the across-the-board to be a 3% or, you know, whatever you'd, whatever you all determine. And that would, that would also be at the same time, I think, when you vote the elected officials as well.
Usually, yeah.
Usually, but...
When should we get that on the agenda then?
When we start making some decisions, or unless you want to do it sooner, I guess, when we start making some decisions on budget probably in positions and capital.
Yeah, I assumed you would want to do that as you see the overall picture and then we start putting pieces together.
Yeah. You thought maybe next Thursday we'd start making some...
Yes, I think we'll, I think we should be ready to do that by then, yep.
Okay. Anything else to come forward?
I think that's all we got scheduled to present, unless you have anything else you want to discuss.
No.
Are we scheduling a session for Thursday?
Certainly can, I thought maybe we would work more on capital, look at that again. Because you've seen them now in individual pieces from the departments and I thought maybe we'd pull it all back together in one presentation so you can see the total that's being requested and talk about...
That's what I thought too, the individuals or the positions, I guess, too, would be good to see.
Okay, we can do that too.
Anything else that anybody wants to say? Not right now, we can tell you, yes, great?
You had talked to me last week about talking about what's in the legislature right now. Did you want a little update on that?
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, it's a moving target.
Yeah, the legislation that would change the rollback for residential property, that would lower it so that we would have less, a much smaller increase in taxable valuation for this budget, has passed the Senate and it's gone through committee in the House. So, there's a good chance it will go into law this, by the end of this week. We have auditor's offices and others have been advised by the Department of Management that until that's passed, we should continue as if, you know, nothing has happened. We have to, you know, we have different duties to fulfill and we need to continue them under the current law. But to be ready to make these changes as soon as the law passes. And Tim Jameson in our office, who is the one who deals with these property valuations, has done redo through the test system in Tyler, our software company. So, he's prepared for when this happens to hit the ground running. The law contains a deadline of April 30th for all local budgets so that we're not under the gun to get it done under the regular time period. It shouldn't really affect, well, I don't want to speculate on what it should and shouldn't affect because you just never know for sure, but it looks like with the extended timeline that it's reasonable for us to be able to complete everything on time. And as Michelle has pointed out, what would... has pointed out, what would happen with our taxable valuation is we would be very close to our current year taxable valuation. Anything you want to add to that?
I actually think Tim's projection showed the countywide going down slightly, so, from the current year, so that's not exactly a bright spot in our year, but it's out there.
So, yeah, legislative updates are good this time of year.
Yeah, I think it's going somewhere tomorrow, on Wednesday, I think there's going to be discussion of that legislation, so we'll, maybe they'll take action, who knows?
It's not necessarily good for us, just good.
No, but we have to stay, right, have to stay aware of it.
Please, because that will impact our, what we do.
Bottom line.
It sure will, you bet. So that could change, we may have one bottom line and then have to move it or change it, so, yeah.
Yes, that's.
Okay. Well, is there anything else to come before board? Or any reports or information from the board?
I'll just report, we had a meeting last week of the Middle Cedar River Watershed Association or Management Authority, and when I started six years ago with them, we were working our way through, like, just over a million-dollar HUD grant that was implementing different infrastructure projects throughout the watershed. That work has completed and we've put together a really great kind of booklet highlighting a lot of the stuff that has been done, and those are being sent to me and I'll be sharing those with everybody, but the, one of the more exciting parts were, because the way the HUD grant was rented, rented, targeted a lot of things in Benton County and, and other areas, but it did include a few projects within Blackhawk County, but more importantly, the, the complete watershed infrastructure planning has been done, and so, things are progressing along and we're, we just, we're finally able to amend our bylaws last week, because we were having some quorum issues, which the watershed groups often deal with, but we were able to successfully reach quorum to amend those, and so quorum won't be an issue anymore and, and the really good work will keep going forward.
Thank you. Yeah, those groups usually tend to be so large, then to get, start getting quorum, it gets to be tough, you bet. Anything else? All right, motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.